Your presence, dear Lord, just let us make decisions based on your guidance and be with us during this time in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas pledge. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible. All right. Excellent. We're at Agenda Item Number Four, recognition of visitors. This is not public comment, but this is an opportunity if there's anybody in the crowd who would like to identify themselves for our record, you may do so at this time. If you'd raise your hand, again, all I can accept at this time is your name, and if you're here on behalf of an entity, the name of your entity. Is there anybody who'd like to identify themselves at this time? Yes, sirs?
South Texas Trail Riders.
Thank you all. What's your names?
Travis Wolfenberger.
Travis Wolfenberger.
Thank you all for being here. We love everything that you guys do every year, look forward to it, and we're glad that you're present this morning. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on. Agenda Item Number Five, Commissioners Court Opening Remarks. I don't know what my mental block is. Okay, thank you.
You can always just flip a coin if you wanted.
I know.
It doesn't matter either way.
Commissioner Lenny, why don't you start?
All right. All right. Good morning, everyone. The last couple of weeks been busy, of course. Attended St. Mary's Academy Halloween Festival. That was a good attendance. Lots of people showed up for that. Also, I want to thank Roden Bridge, taking care of some potholes on La Pata Road, also County Road 344, and brush cutting on 321, 327, and 342. So that's all got taken care of. Want to thank Yolanda Lynch for inviting me to the Turkey Plate Community Luncheon in Skidmore. It was well attended. Also, attended a fundraiser for Oscar Sanchez in Pettis. He was a young man that got burned really bad, and they had a fundraiser for him, and it was, a lot of people showed up for it in support of him. They do a lot, him and his wife Melissa do a lot for the people of Pettis. So that was a good, good deal for them to have people turn out to support back. Also, got with Roden Bridge on a stop sign that's leaning over, almost completely down at the corner of Gaetan Lane and Amador Ramirez Road. And then also with that high wind the other day, there was a pretty good-sized tree that fell on 59 West, and it wasn't in the roadway, but it was taking up the entire shoulder. Got with TexDOT, and they're getting that taken care of. We won't have another meeting before this happens, so I want to remind everyone, if anyone is interested in participating in the Christmas lighted parade, you can get with Melissa Sanchez at Main Street, The City, or Janie Gonzalez at Affordable Insurance and get a application to participate in it. And that's going to be Saturday, December the sixth, starting at 6:00 PM. So if anyone's interested, you can get with either Melissa or Janie and get that taken care of. With thou passed to my left.
Thank you, Commissioner. Judge, I've got a potpourri of things, and then we'll take a trip, and then we'll take a journey, if you would, sir.
Settle in, everybody.
Attended a Wildlife Association meeting out at the, what, the Twisted Oaks out there? That's a great place. It really is. A lot of people out there. It was real good. Couple of things that are going on. If you will, we're going to take a couple of trips right now. Go to the Mineral Cemetery Road. If you go between here and Mineral, turn left on Mineral Cemetery Road. Well, there've been a couple of funerals that missed the turn. And what I mean by missed the turn is you go down Mineral Cemetery Road, there's a real sharp turn to the right, then you go up a half a mile, and you go into the Mineral Cemetery. Well, there's another turn to the immediate left after the right that goes to an old place called Corona. Two funerals went that way. So Roden Bridge, I got with Roden Bridge and said, "We need to do something to help these folks out because you've got a funeral procession all heading in the wrong direction." They're going to put a, and the signs are already ordered, it's going to say Mineral Cemetery, half a mile with an arrow, and then down at the entrance of the Mineral Cemetery, they're going to add a sign that says Mineral Cemetery established 1873. So trying to help those folks out. You can only imagine, put yourself in their place, you're following a funeral procession, and you're way out in the middle of nowhere trying to figure out where the cemetery is. So they're working on that as we speak. Something else that's going on. We all know where St. Mary's comes into the loop out there by Tractor Supply. There's a sign that says, "No right turn on red." We've all seen that. We all know that's there. Well, I got a call this last week that people are turning right on red and almost getting run over by the big trucks. Those big trucks are coming through there, and they, they can't stop. You know, they're doing 30, 35 miles an hour because they have the right of way. They said, "You need to do something." I said, "Well, I'll go take a look at it." I, I learned a long time ago, when somebody calls in something, "Go look at it, there could be a simple solution." Well, I got up there because they said, "There's another sign that says, 'No turn right on red before you get to the intersection.'" Well, there is, except there's, there was a palm tree there, and the palm fronds had covered the sign up completely. You couldn't even see it. There was another sign closer to the intersection that said, "Loop 351 with arrows going both ways." It was covered up with a palm tree. So I called the engineer, I called Mr. Nick Novasod in Kennedy, great guy, we work very close with our TexDOT partners, and I said, "We've got a problem." He said, "What is it?" And he pulled it up on his computer, and he said, "Yeah, the palm tree's behind the sign." I said, "Yep, but it's gotten taller, and the palm fronds are completely blocking the sign." He said, "I'll take care of it." Because I sent him a picture showing that it was completely blocked. You couldn't even see the sign. Within an hour, within one hour, that had been cleared, and so had the other one. So they respond when there's an emergency. That was a health and safety issue. You know, you're from here, you know it's there. But if you're not from here and you didn't see that, you may not see the one that's up on the, up at, high in the sky. Now, we're going to take a little journey. And this journey started by, was started by this commissioner several weeks ago for B County and the Commissioners Court. And it involves the Screwworm Fly Breeding Facility. If you'll go back several meetings, I started talking about what we were doing and what we were trying to get done, what I had done. The initial phone call that I got was from Mr. Frank Massey in Mineral when they started having problems with the Screwworms south of the border. He said, "Is there anything we can do in B County to help?" I said, "I don't know, but I'll check." Okay. Fast forward, I got with Mr. Blair, I got with Mr. Sykes, I called a senator, I called our state rep, I called everybody I knew and said, "Hey, we've got this problem, we might can help you in B County. We have some great facilities out at Chase Field. Take a look at them." Well, it rocked along, rocked along, rocked along. The last Commissioners Court meeting, I showed you an article out of Parks and Wildlife Magazine where they talked about the Screwworm Fly, and they showed a picture of it. Well, what has happened, I've spent a few years in government, and I know that, that if you get the right information out there, something may happen. What they have realized is that the facility they're going to try to build down in the valley, there's nothing there right now. What was there in the 60s is gone. They've got to completely rebuild all that. You're looking two, two and a half years before they can have it up and running. Right now, everything's coming out of Panama, having been flown up. The Screwworm's latest report was within 70 miles of the border. Those, and we've talked about the devastation that the Screwworms do to the livestock and to the deer and one thing and another. What has happened now, the Secretary in Austin, Ms. Rawlings, I want to tell you something about her. She's an A&amp;M graduate. Keep that in the back of your mind because it's going to tie in with what I'm going to say later on in my talk. Okay, Sid Miller, our State Agricultural Commissioner, is on board. So is Ms. Dawn Buckingham, Commissioner Jim Wright, our senator, our state rep, Michael Cloud. They're all on board with something happening in B County. There've been several secret squirrel meetings, and I know Michael Blair's probably been at some of them. I've been to a couple of them. We had a big meeting out at Chase Field, looked at the facility, they said, "Man, this is great." Since then, it's been leased out to an individual that, from what I understand, is saying, "I'm really not going to do anything with it." It may still come to fruition at Chase Field. If not, we have another location in B County we're looking at very strong. There's a secret squirrel meeting coming up very soon with a lot of these people that are going to take a look at it. A&amp;M is involved now, the Extension Service is involved, and that's where I was saying that Ms. Rawlings is, Ms. Rawlings is an A&amp;M graduate. That's all beginning to come together. We may see something soon. Mr. Blair may know more about this than I do, but I'm getting a lot of information from a lot of different people, and this was a journey that, that I started B County on several weeks ago with some phone calls and personal visits with Mr. Blair and Randy Sykes. They phoned their contacts, kind of got things going. The people that built the facility in Panama are involved. The people that fly the airplanes that release the flies are involved. They're, they're excited about what we have in B County. It's a good location, it's close enough to the border but far enough from the border. So it's coming together. I, I feel very optimistic. Judge, I think that we should know something pretty soon.
Awesome.
I think, I think things are looking very well. So a lot of people have been involved, a lot of people have made a lot of phone calls. There've been meetings in the valley, Austin, Washington, countless meetings I don't even know about, about this. And once they find out what's going on, they say, "Man, this is a good idea." Sid Miller, Agricultural Commissioner in Austin, said, "Man, this is great. That'll put 500 jobs in B County because it's a 24-hour operation." So this could, this could be something, Judge. I think, I think we're well on our way to fruition, and I believe it's going to happen. With that, sir, I will pass to my left.
Oh. All right. I'll do that. All right. It's been a busy two weeks. The first, I attended a B County Board of Realtors meeting along with Judge Morrell and Bobby Jimmison. Thank God they were both there to answer these questions, but they had a, they had some concerns over the way the maps are listed on the Google listings, and they list Beeville in some of the areas as colonias, and they want to know where that came from. So at the time, we didn't know. So I checked with Natalie Gonzalez from Grant Works, and she did some investigating. That's a federal designation, and it has to do with the Attorney General and the state of Texas, and then they get ahold of it in DC, and they put that, they, each one of those is assigned a number, so they're designated a colonia. So we have that there. So that was a very interesting meeting. We answered a lot of other questions that were going on in B County, so we did real good. Thank you, Mr. Jimmison. Judge, you did build us out there real good. The other, went to support the B, the Blanconia Fire Department fundraiser. In Blanconia, they have it every November, first day of the deer season, every Saturday, every year, and they had a good turnout out there, and it was, it was, it was good. Sheriff was also there to support him. I saw him there. The other was, I attended the B County Wildlife Management Annual Fundraiser at the Twisted, what is it, Twisted Ranch or Twisted? Twisted Oak Facility. Very nice. Supported these people because they support a lot of the B County youth. They do a lot of the fundraisers, they do some programs for them, so I, it was a very good event. Did the final walkthrough for the concrete rings that were placed at the sheriff, behind the sheriff's office and at the Emergency Operations Center. Ambi, our local contractor poured those, and they're, they're done, they're waiting for the next step. And that is the contractor's going to put up the tanks, and they're supposed to be done, the November 17th is for the sheriff's office, and November 18th is for the EOC. And those will be done, it's a one-day deal coming up. So next week, they'll be putting up storage tanks, God willing, and everything arrives on time. The monuments here at the courthouse were finally completed this past weekend. We had them cleaned and all, they were, they were in real bad shape, the one by the jet, and then the one, the J.I. Forum one up here in front, and he finished painting the letters inside. So now you can walk up to the monument, you can actually read what's on, on the monuments there. So if you get a chance, pass by there and see the one at the jet, and they, they're very, very nice. Got a call from the board members at Halo Flight, and they're asking for a heli track, and it's a cart that they land the helicopter on, and it's a remote-controlled cart that they can be, you know, pushed back, you know, it'll, it'll take the helicopter into the hangar. So we're working with that, trying to get these, you know, all these details straightened out before we bring them to the court, but that's working right now. Also had a meeting with our Johnny Segirre and Brian from Pro-Tech to finalize the boiler system that they're working on now. You hear the noise out there? It was inspected, it was, all the final pieces are put together. The guys out there right now are checking the last of the sensors, and so they can turn it on tomorrow. And then we'll get, we'll get all that going there. And also, Lisa, I want to give a big shout out to the Trojan Band for, for competing and going out there. I think they did great. That just shows a lot for our kids here in B County, in Beeville. So with that, I'll pass to you, sir.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Last week, I had an opportunity to send the, attend the city council meeting, very interesting subject on water, so it was good to, to hear what's happening with our, with our water in the area. Also, as Commissioner Sammy has the lead on these, installing these tanks, also want to recognize Mr. Bobby Jimmison for catching a quality issue concerning the rebar that was installed. He, he identified some of the rebar wasn't installed properly. He brought it to my attention, we notified the contractor, and we got it fixed, so before the pour. So thank you, Bobby. Appreciate your keen eye on checking some quality issues. Also, attended a, or participated in a conference call. We're looking at revising the agreement that we have with the expo. We've gotten some great information back from TAC on how we need to modify a little bit of our language, so, so that's in the works, more to come on that. I also attended a Chiefs volunteer meeting in Tynan. Was participated very well by all. Good information. We had good representation from, from our, from our county government, so good, good thing there. Also, the Texas workforce was on site in Skidmore. Unfortunately, not too many people are taking advantage of the free resources that are available to them, assisting with job placement, generating resumes, helping write your resumes. So it's a free service. If anyone is interested, they'll be back, take advantage of it because it's free. Very good thing. Also, we had a request from our DPS officer, Mr. Justin Yanek. The scales at 181 are in need of repair. We had a brief conversation, basically it may be best to replace the scales rather than continue to, to repair them. The positive thing around that is the amount of money that they're generating will pay these scales out in less than a month. So we're looking roughly around $30,000 to, to get this replaced, but it's going to be, it's going to be a win-win for, for everything to get that done. On the Toledo Street Jail, got some good news here for the Commissioners and Judge and Madam Auditor. After conducting a value engineering review, still waiting on two other contractors to come in with their prices, we were able to reduce the estimate by about $47,000, which is now bringing it well within our target goal, Judge, so I think you'd be happy with that. So appreciate the patience, a good thing we're not on a fast track in getting this jail done, but, but things are looking good. So we'll get, we'll hopefully get these contracts awarded here next week. And with that, Judge, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are we still on track to maybe have that complete by March, April of next year?
I think so. Once we get these contracts out, it'll go pretty quick.
Thank you. You guys have all been very busy. Appreciate all your efforts and commitment to the county. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Six, are there any members of the public who wish to address Commissioners Court at this time? Okay. Moving on, Agenda Item Number Seven, the following items are of an administrative nature. Commissioners Court has been furnished documentation on each item, and all such items may be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a Commissioner or County Judge.
Move to approve with a brief comment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner DeWitt, you have the floor.
I had one question on a charge in the budget, and I've given it to the auditor to check it out. No big deal.
Great. Thank you, sir. Anything further? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Discuss and consider action on the following items. I'm going to rearrange the agenda a little bit, just for fun. Agenda Item Number Twelve, I'm going to move up above Agenda Item Number Eight, and then Agenda Item Number Seventeen, I'm going to move below Agenda Item Number Eight. Hopefully, that's clear as mud. So Agenda Item Number Twelve, Presentation and Discussion by Taylor Tomlin regarding the drilling of commercial water wells near residential areas. Mr. Tomlin, you have the floor, sir. If you'd come up to the lecter and identify yourself for the court, and then look forward to hearing what you have to say, sir.
Appreciate you moving that up. I got to get back to the college for FFA contest. Judge, Commissioners, I'm going to note, because it seems important, that I'm also an A&amp;M graduate, but more importantly, a Pettis and CBC graduate, and a 27-year resident of Precinct Two. Now, it's been brought to my attention by a neighbor that they are going to have a commercial water well drilled, not a quarter mile from my property line, and that's going to impact myself and at least 16 other residential and commercial wells as they're going to the same depth we're all in. So given the current water disaster, I was hoping to entice the Commissioners to maybe put some sort of water restrictions on commercial water well drilling. I've worked in the oil field, I've been a landman, I know what happens with these wells. It's a great deal for the landowner. They get a well drilled for free, five years goes up on the lease, and they have a free well. But that's not going to pay for my new well when that well is depleted thousands of gallons, especially when there are millions of gallons of water in saltwater disposal tanks all over South Texas that these oilfield companies could reclaim and recycle. So my family uses about 300 gallons of water today. This well is predicted to pump 13,000 gallons a day, and given a year's time, I'm going to have to drill about 400 feet deeper, and I don't have that $15,000. I'm sure none of my neighbors do either. And this is not just myself, I've had a lot of people between Mineral and Normana express fear in what's going to happen when this big well comes in. So if you would please take that in consideration, at least so long as there's still a water emergency, putting some sort of restrictions on commercial water well drilling.
Mr. Tomlin, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
What's this well for? What are they going to use it for?
Mud.
Mud.
To mix drilling mud for a...
Okay, they're going to use it to drill a water well?
Yeah, they need a well.
Water well?
To mix mud, so. I don't know where the well, or the oil well is going to be drilled, but they're going to be using that for the water.
I got you. Mr. Tomlin, have you brought this up with the B County Groundwater Conservation District?
Have not.
Okay. I, I believe they control well permitting in the county. I can't remember when it was started. Yours is either grandfathered in, or you had to go through the process of getting them, or your well driller had to go through the process of getting them to approve the permit, but I think you probably ought to address them directly. I believe they have a website. I, I don't know who their current members are. I know Ellis McKinney used to be on the board for a long time, but it's a serious issue, and it is a concern. I'm glad you brought it to our attention, I appreciate it very much.
I have contact information after court, or just...
I'd be happy to talk to, to any of those people, absolutely.
Great. And I guess, because you got to leave if you want to, Taylor, do you have Taylor's contact information? Okay. Dino, we'll get the information to you through...
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all for your time.
Anything further? Thanks again. Best of luck to the FFA competitors today and to the judge. Hopefully, they feed you well.
I can show those 13 Pettis kids they can do it too.
Yes, they can. Thank you, sir. Moving on, Agenda Item Number Eight, approve interlocal agreement between B County and the B Development Authority for the sweeping of the active and inactive runways, taxiways, tarmacs, and ramps located at Chase Field Airport. Beeville, come on up.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. My name's Michael Blair, I'm the Executive Director for the B Development Authority, which oversees Chase Field. We really appreciate the opportunity to come and visit with you all about this. This has been kind of a, from what I, and I've been here seven months, so if it's different beyond that, feel free to educate me, but earlier this year, we were happy to work with Roden Bridge, along with the city of Beeville, to go ahead and sweep those runways, as well as the taxiways, I believe, and kind of visiting with Roden Bridge and then Judge's office. They thought it would be good for us, as a matter of practice, to have interlocal agreements for this. So we have one more scheduled for the rest of this calendar year. Obviously, we've had a few events out of Chase Field the last couple of weeks, and so need to get those runways and taxiways reswept for the benefits of the airplanes, and so I think you should have a map in the packet of where we're hoping to get the county's help on, but like I said, one more sweep this year, and then we'll probably come back for the 2026 calendar year when we have that schedule more locked down with all the events that we're booking for Chase Field for next year, to try and make sure that we're doing as a matter of practice cleaning after folks come.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. Any questions?
Can I ask you a question, please?
Of course.
Have you all looked into buying your own sweeper? Because a lot of times, they're on the other end of the county or wherever.
We would love to. I would tell you, the challenge for us budget-wise next year is that we're about to hopefully get a $2 million grant from the EDA to insert some wastewater lines that should open up front developments at the field, and so literally almost every penny is spoken for in our budget next year. But certainly would always appreciate the opportunity or insights for, call it government auctions, or anybody else who has sweepers that they're looking to get rid of.
Have you, have you priced one to see what it would cost?
Yes, we have priced and have looked at multiple sorts of, we're trying to figure out where would be, what would be a good vehicle that would allow us to do multiple functions with it. And so when you want multiple functions, tends to be a little bit higher in terms of cost, but that is something that we are looking for as well.
Because I know that, that you guys have a need, like, right now, and they may be on the other side of their equipment's broken down, and if you had it in your own warehouse out there, your maintenance crew could go get it and go sweep the little area, whatever needed to be done. It'd be perfect.
From your lips to God's ears, so. But we're very excited that, you know, starting next year, will be the first time, probably in a very long time, that all of the hangars at Chase Field are actually leased, you know, and one of our tenants is actually working with us to bring back a building that had been sitting vacant since 1990, since 1992 as well. So definitely a lot of movement in the positive direction as far as budget goes. I'm piling up requests for BEIC and trying to figure out how to, you know, go to them strategically for money, and, but always happy to talk to anybody else who'd like to, you know, have a stepchild that needs, that needs money every, every so often, so.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. As I understand it, the project will last two to three days, is that right, or three, four?
Yeah, I think probably no more than two and a half days. We do pay for, from what I, we have traditionally paid for the fuel, so obviously, the county and the city are not out anything budget-wise other than time for this, and we also buy lunch for the, for the county folks who come to help us, so.
Is that something we can accommodate?
Yeah, the other thing I noticed was there wasn't a date on the, or the dates of the, when y'all wanted to do it?
Yes.
Excellent question.
Wonderful. Right to the point.
Yeah.
I thought we could just have a planned drive, so they're here.
Absolutely. Looks like we were holding the ninth, the city had agreed to the 19th, 20th, and 21st of this month. So you can have the city... Next Wednesday.
City and the county out there at the same time?
Makes it go faster. Absolutely.
Yes, they have all of them at the same time.
Yeah, because there's a lot of runway and stuff.
It's a long, it's a long runway.
Yeah.
An entertaining motion at this time?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Blair. Always good to see you. Appreciate your efforts, uh, out at the BDA. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes without exception. Moving on, uh, jumping down and moving on, Agenda item number seven, approve expo request from South Texas Trail Riders for their event on February seventh, twenty-twenty-six.
Move to approve?
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Gentlemen, if you have a presentation, I don't wanna cut you off. I don't know if you wanna tell, uh, everybody, uh, and have a, a recording of, of, uh, what y'all are doing this year and when you're gonna be rolling through the county, but we'd love to hear it if you don't mind.
Appreciate y'all having us here. We appreciate all of y'all's help for the trail ride. This is our sixty-seventh year coming through Beeville. Not as big as we used to be, but we're trying. We're really trying to get everybody back, so, I think Travis has something to say about last year's auction?
Yes. Uh, one, I really greatly appreciate y'all approving us, because you have no idea what the amenities out there bring to us and our members and help us get down the road to San Antonio. Your new dump site, you're being able to fill up with water, helps us out tremendously, cause most of us live in our horse trailers going to San Antonio. So, we really appreciate that, um, as well as, I spoke with Commissioner for Precinct Three, Mr. Sammy, last year after our auction. Y'all had multiple kids within Beet County get money. One of them was named Mr. Huey.
Yeah.
And I ca- contacted Commissioner to let him know, "Our trail ride committee supports us and all the youth of Texas along the trail ride route." So, Mr. Huey, the young man, he got five hundred dollars added to his steer at the auction last year. And there were other multiple kids from Beet County that got added money from us to them at the auction in San Antonio, so.
Kind of our way of giving back-
Yes.
-to the communities that we go through.
Yes.
Then we do Beeville, Carne City Kennedy, Florisville.
San Pat.
San Pat, and we try to get, at the auction, we get with our chairperson, give them the name, what we're going through, alright, we can do this, we can do that. And it just helps out all the way around.
We will see you guys February seventh. That's when we will be rolling into town, and hopefully we have beautiful weather like this.
Sounds great. Thank y'all very much.
Thank y'all so much.
Take care.
Yes, sir. Y'all take care. Thank y'all.
Oh, yeah, you wanna wait until, see if we pass it? Cause we may just deny, y'all walked out all happy. I don't, I don't have an expo rep, uh, here, but Paulette, uh, we, uh, the livestock, Junior Livestock Show, we've let them know, they're, they're aware. And in years past, I know we've worked well together, I just wanna make sure there's been some communication. Okay. There's no further discussion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes without exception.
Thank y'all so much.
Y'all have a wonderful day.
Happy trails.
Enjoy this.
Yes, sir. We'll see you.
And if y'all would like, if y'all would like to come have dinner with us that Saturday night, I'll be with the expo, please feel free.
Thank you, sir.
Y'all have a good one.
You too. Okay. Thought that was appropriate.
It was definitely appropriate.
Mercy.
Lucky I didn't bust into song.
Oh, Lord.
Oh, gosh, please, no.
Who was that? Yeah. Thank you.
Our heroes.
Maybe next Commissioner's Court.
We do, like, a trip down memory lane.
We can do that.
Singing cowboys?
We can do that.
What? I think that'd be interesting. I think that's what the people want.
Okay.
Don't forget about Bullet.
Follow your lead, sir.
Oh, I'm gonna do it now. I can't do that. Alright, Agenda item-
Interesting meeting next time.
Moving, we're all, we won't have a quorum. Agenda item number nine, approve notice of renewal for the lease agreement between Beet County and Christus Spawn Health System Corporation. I believe this is a five-year renewal. Uh, this is an automatic option, uh, at the discretion of, uh, the hospital. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
I've got a motion, multiple seconds. I think I heard Commissioner Lenny before Commissioner Ferias, but I could be wrong. But we'll take what I said as being correct. How about that? It's good to be in this chair. Alright, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes without exception. Agenda item number ten, approve resolution, a commitment to the Coastal Bend Water Alliance declaring unified commitment to the development of regional water supplies. Now, that's an aspirational agenda item. Yes, sir, come on down.
Good morning. It's great to be with you. My name is Chad McGill. I'm the district liaison for Senator Adam Hinoosa, and I'm happy, very happy to be in Beet County this morning. Uh, last week, I was in six different counties. Today, I'll only be in three, but I start here, so.
Goodness.
It's good to be with you. Um, so, uh, Senator Adam Hinoosa, been hard at work, obviously, in the legislature, and, and we're about to start interns. Uh, but we wanna extend the invitation, and through this resolution, the opportunity to join in, uh, the Coastal Bend Water Alliance. Uh, in March of last year, a senator cast his vision forward, and since, uh, we're seeing other alliances form across the state of Texas to compete for valuable water resources and funding. Uh, no time like the present for the Coastal Bend to, uh, gather and meet, uh, in a, in an organization that's not requesting funding, not requesting staff time. Uh, but at this time, uh, getting all of, uh, decision-makers in the Coastal Bend in the same room to be able to discuss, uh, the future of water in the Coastal Bend. Uh, if you look at other areas of the state of Texas, like the Central Texas Water Alliance that's formed, uh, they're way ahead of us, uh, and they're, they're, in this past legislative session, got the opportunity to, um, uh, access funding, bond, uh, capacity. Uh, there's twenty-seven different entities, uh, public organizations, from military bases to counties to municipalities to water districts, all joining in alignment on what they agree on, uh, projects where they, uh, access funding from the state and, and support from the state. Um, in doing so, they compete with now, uh, larger municipalities like Houston, Dallas, San Antonio, El Paso, uh, Austin, that have largely been able to access water funding because of the people and the amount that they serve. So, this gives an opportunity for Beet County to have a seat at the table, the Coastal Bend Water Alliance, the ability to be able to discuss larger regional water issues, albeit you're not a water provider. Uh, but you have a, certainly a very strong voice in the Coastal Bend, and we want to invite you to be a part of that.
Thank you, Mr. McGill. Any questions?
Just this. I guess a clarity on the water allowance, too, and all that include?
So, that includes, uh, let's see, it, from Beet County, San Patricio County, Nuasis County, and Clayboro County, and those, those four counties. Uh, the, the senator, uh, represents eight counties, uh, so in those four counties, water districts, municipalities, counties, uh, drainage districts, anybody that has any kind of connectivity with water or constituency that they serve that, uh, needs water.
What would you like this county to bring to the table?
Uh, just your vision and what you wanna see for Beet County in the future, really, and, and it's, and this, this resolution commits you to joining the wa- the Coastal Bend Water Alliance. Uh, should Commissioners, uh, attend the first meeting, which we believe is gonna be in January, um, you, you're all welcome to come. Now, take care of your quorum requirements, however you see fit, maybe post it, uh, but it's up to you. In that first meeting, we're gonna talk about public utility agencies, which is, uh, from the senator's bill, let's see. Senator Adam Hinoosa wrote the bill, SB eleven sixty-nine. His co-author, uh, Senator Charles Perry, uh, uh, worked on that bill. Public utility agencies are an opportunity for any two or more public agencies to partner, um, on, um, utility projects, water utility projects. Could be specifically for a specific project or multiple projects. Could be opportunities for public agencies, P-threes, industry, other state agencies to all combine, but not lose their own identity. You're, you're for the project or for the purpose, and then either the, the, the PUA goes away or it continues. Uh, but that SB eleven sixty-nine will be on the agenda. There'll be other items, too. So, bring to the table an open mind, but also the fact that Beet County is a very important part of the Coastal Bend.
A thought, if I could.
Yes, sir.
Have you contacted the local municipal utility districts like in Pettis, Skidmore, and Tynan? They have a, a real stake in this water system, more so than Beet County.
Mm-hmm.
We don't supply public water, they do.
Right. We, we would absolutely love to, to start the conversation.
I would really recommend that, uh, that if you would get in touch with them, there's one in Pettis, and one in Skidmore, and there's one in Tynan.
Great.
And for, I don't know, I don't think I'm gonna get any more. The one in, uh, Pawnee is, uh, also, but it's out of Carne County.
Okay.
So, but I really believe they would have some really pertinent information they would wanna bring out. I really do.
Outstanding. Yes, we'd love to invite them. Any contact information you can provide would be very helpful. I, I appreciate that recommendation very much.
Okay, if you could leave your business card, uh, I'm sure the county judge's secretary has that information.
We can get it.
Yes.
I can do it, yeah.
You, y'all all have it?
Just not you?
Just me, that's alright.
We'll make sure. We'll make sure. All good.
You said something about P-three, can you, what is the P-threes?
Sure. Uh, P-three is a public-private partnership. Uh, in some cases, you'll see public-to-public, which is a P-two. A P-three is just, uh, where you have private industry. In, uh, public utility agencies, uh, the language itself, um, is very similar to the state of Florida and their public utility agency, or they kinda name it a little bit different. Um, it allows for founding partners. They have to be public entities, but you can have contract partners. So, if you were to have a, a, a large project and you, you wanted someone on the private side to build it, you could contract with that private side to build it. But they're not a founding partner, they're not a part of the board. The public agencies that serve the constituency are the ones who make the decisions. So, that's where a P-three is possible in that framework. Public utility agencies, there's one in Texas right now. Uh, it was bracketed previously using legislative terms. Now, it's open for the state of Texas. Right now, there's one in the valley that I'm working with, that, uh, four cities working on a water project. Uh, there's one in, uh, the Dallas area, five cities working together on a water project. You're gonna see public utility agencies everywhere. So, uh, it's a very, uh, transformative type of bill, and allows for the private sector to participate, but only for specific purposes. Hopefully, I answered your question.
Hey, good.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You know, if I could, one of the thought, I forgot all about the city of Beeville.
Yes.
Absolutely.
They, they have joined.
They need to be part of this.
They have joined, yes. We, we've been working with them even before their disaster declaration.
Okay.
Um, and so, uh, we believe they're on track.
Good.
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. McGill, this resolution, basically, for lack of better terms, it, it, uh, allows, it, it gives us a seat at the table, whether it's one or all of us that attend these, uh, meetings, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that's exactly right. So, uh, the senator absolutely wants Beet County to be represented, and, uh, certainly you're all invited. Uh, of course, you gotta watch quorum, but, uh, you know, if you post it publicly, then, you know, you can all participate.
Have y'all picked a place to have the meeting? I mean, we could have a meeting here in Beet County.
Uh, at, at some point, we may. At some point, we may. The first meeting, we do.
We've got a great place at the Emergency Management Center, we could have it, or we could have it in the courthouse, and that way, we could really be a part of it.
That'd be great. And, and, and that also allows for, uh, members of the Coastal Bend Water Alliance to get to know each of our areas, too. So, I think that's very important.
Yes.
Uh, this first meeting, I believe, is gonna be more centrally located, but we will definitely, cause I view things in terms of the senator's district, right? So, you're the most northern county, and I love being here, uh, so what we'll do is, we'll line up that schedule for the next year, and we'll certainly include Beet County as one of the hosts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGill. At this time, I'd entertain a motion.
Still moved?
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes without exception. Thank you, Mr. McGill, for that presentation. Don't go anywhere. Agenda item number eleven, presentation by Chad McGill, district liaison, office of Senator Adam Hinoosa.
I, I believe it's the same thing.
Okay.
So, I think there was, there was the opportunity to present further information if needed, so I don't wanna take up your time, and just, uh, my presentation is a thank you.
Well, now, we've got an open agenda item. Are there any questions Commissioners have for Senator Hinoosa's office?
On the first one, are you, is it gonna be on the website or somewhere where we can get, look at, look at?
More information?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Uh, we're, we're in the middle of that right now. Uh, it, originally, we were aiming for the first meeting to be in November, uh, but we moved that with the holidays coming up, uh, and, and certainly getting large groups of people together. We wanna, uh, and decision-makers, we wanna make sure you have as much information, uh, as possible. So, what we'll do is, I'll follow up with each of you and send you information on where to find information. It'll all be posted probably sometime in early December, if not sooner, uh, and you'll get that information on that first meeting. Uh, what to expect, really, it's, it's a, it's a loose organization. We're not asking for funding, we're not asking for any staff, staffing. It's more of get the decision-makers in the room and see what comes from it. Uh, we will have some informational items, some topics to take home, and probably some tools for you to be able to use to help people here in Beet County.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. McGill. Anything further? Appreciate you making the effort coming by and, and, and talking with us this morning.
Absolutely. Thank you for the opportunity.
Yes, sir. Moving on, Agenda item number thirteen, approve updated brush disposal lease agreement with name change from Morris Family Farm to Emmett Carpenter, including a two-year annual renewal and price adjustment.
Judge, if you will, I'm the one that started this, I think, uh, going from a hundred dollars a month to two hundred dollars and paying once a year instead of having to send a check out every month. I recommend we approve this, sir.
Second.
That's my motion.
Question? I've got a motion and a second. Commissioner Ferias, you can ask.
Did we budget for this in the-
No, I don't believe we did.
For the increase?
No, we did not.
Where's that gonna come from?
Unappropriate place.
April? What's the total increase?
Twelve hundred dollars.
Okay, so this'll just be a line item transfer, not a budget amendment?
I would not recommend a budget amendment.
No, not for that small amount.
It doesn't check all the boxes for it, man. I just don't wanna, I just wanna know where it was gonna, whose budget it was gonna hit.
Road and Reed.
Road and Reed.
Congratulations.
There you go, Jonathan.
Yeah.
What's that more breast?
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes without exception. Agenda item number fourteen, approve primary joint election resolution for the March three, two thousand twenty-six primaries. You're already here. Okay, good.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. This is just a little housekeeping that we have to do every other year and stuff. I have already spoken with both the party chairs, uh, Patty Johnson for the Republicans and Sean Marum for the Democrat. They do wanna hold a joint primary again this year, and I just need a resolution from the court to have it.
I entertain a motion at this time?
Still moved?
Got a motion, got a second. Just make them both. Sammy, motion. Chris, second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes without exception. Usually, when I write while I speak, and the two things are not the same, I start writing when I'm speaking. I want everybody in the audience to relax. I knocked it out of the park this morning, so.
You did good on the pledge, too.
Thanks. Yeah, no hesitation.
No hesitation whatsoever.
Sometimes everything works out well. Rarely. Did I, did I take a motion? Did we?
We did, we didn't vote.
We didn't vote? And I already signed the ding? Golly. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes without exception. Pretend I just signed my signature now. Thank you, ma'am, always. Agenda item number fifteen, approve the election administrator's request to use the county credit card to pay for hotel accommodations and registration fees for the Midwinter Texas Association of Tech, of County Election Officials Conference, January thirteenth to fifteenth, twenty-twenty-six, in College Station.
Move to approve?
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Who'd you pick? Commissioner Lenny. By a hair. Any further discussion?
Yes, I would like to say it's at the Hilton Hotel, because that's the missing information.
That does not sound fancy enough for one of these conferences. No Great Wolf?
No, not, not by all stages.
Alright. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes without exception. Agenda item number sixteen, approve the district attorney's request to use the county credit card for payment of annual bar dues memberships for five attorneys for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six.
Move to approve?
Second.
Okay, what you weren't gonna miss out on at that time, where you, Commissioner, you got your second? Alright. Motion and second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes without exception. Uh, agenda item number eighteen, approve expo request from Beet County Four-H for their Christmas party on December eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five.
Move to approve? Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Anything you wanna say? I just hope it's a good party. Oh, alright, look at that.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Glad I asked.
There you go.
There's no further discussion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes without exception. Agenda item number nineteen, Hurricane Harvey, Texas General Land Office, GLO, Community Development Block Grant, CDVG, Status, and Project Upstate. Gentlemen, anything to report?
Yes, so we, uh, we continue to move forward. We're having some more surveys done. Uh, they're looking at some plaits. Uh, we were able to provide them some detailed information as far as right-of-ways on the, on the, the actual road itself for Silver Creek Lane, which is pretty important, uh, cause the landowners were, had a lot of interest around that. Also, we have a small update. Fran, if you could give a little update on that from the meeting?
Hello, Commissioners, Judge. My name is Frances Melvin. I am the grant administrator. Uh, last week, I had a call with, uh, Sarah from Grantworks, Paul Martin from GLO. We discussed the status of the MIT mod project, um, which came to finding out that we're missing two environmental reports from Anna Aldridge and Hanson Engineering, and these are required to move forward with the, um, environmental reviews for CDVG. Um, we've reached out to her. She did send some in early that morning, um, but we've gone ahead and reached out to her again. We need to, those two specific reports, which, one is an environmental report on ground disturbance, and the other one is, um, and the other one is for compliance on drilling wells locations. So once those are done, then they'll move to the next step of the environmental compliance and then subsequent implementation going forward. So that was our call. We're going to have another one probably at mid-December to see if we're still on track, if we've received everything from Ms. Aldridge and Hanson that's required.
And that's on the water wells in Pettis and Tynan?
Bless you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Is there a, in this, Franny or April either, if you can ask, answer this question? Do we have a timeframe, kind of like with ARPA funds or CARES Act, by which we have to expend these funds? Or is the commitment and the project process not constrained by an arbitrary deadline, or do we know?
I don't know, but I can find that information out and let you know.
Yeah, it'd just be kind of good to know if we really have to increase, you know, pressure on our contractors.
Of course, this is Hurricane Harvey, which happened how many years ago? Six, seven years ago?
2017.
2017? Still the same money.
Yeah, but we were, I mean, it was just a war.
Yeah.
Right. I understand. I'm just saying.
And I'm just, yeah, I was just kind of.
And just for date-wise, for the public to know, this grant, just two and a half years later, we're just now getting approved.
Yes.
So it's how long it takes to get a grant, boy.
Yeah.
I was once told by a wise Commissioner here, this is not the corporate environment. Sometimes it takes time to get things done. That's it.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I don't know who that'd be, huh?
I have no idea.
Moving on. Do you have any further updates?
No.
No? Excellent. Thank you. We have no executive session items. Did I miss any agenda items, anybody? All right, good. Just wanted to double-check. I think I did. I think I caught them all. Since we have no executive session items, I will entertain at this moment a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you all for your time, your presence, and your comments today. This is your event.